The Ocean Meetings Act is posted on the wall, roll call.
Holly?
Here.
Buckminster?
Here.
Rod?
Here.
Wisdom? Ferguson?
Present.
Bradcliffe?
Yeah.
Four Acre?
Here.
Lyden?
Here.
Form?
Legal.
Under the merit report, the only thing I got is I'm still looking for a senior citizen to be on the board. Requires traveling to be accessed once every quarter. Paced mildly, so I really appreciate some senior citizens helping me out there. City Minister, report.
Uh, we have a lot of talk going on through the meetings, so I'll keep mine fairly brief. Um, we do have, which come out of the paper, is all wards for council positions are gonna be contested. So, I guess that's a good thing. We'll have that, that happening. Um, like I said, they have that board, uh, that's for Blue Rivers. In addition to that, we potentially have an offer that may be coming before council here. Uh, five, or excuse me, uh, five, or region five, um, is now a pace. Different company, they're looking at potentially making an offer on the senior center. Um, and being able to still then do their services potentially out of there, so. We'll be looking at that, I guess, and bringing it to council to take a review. Take a review.
All right. Chief?
Hi, Mr.?
Nothing. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have minutes approval for February twenty first, twenty twenty four. Agenda approval, claims approval for February seventeenth through March first, twenty twenty four. And the consent agenda.
Mr. Jeffrey?
Sorry?
Remote.
Seven yeas.
Under over business. Discussion, possible renovation of Pritchard Auditorium, Robin Ankrum.
Is my age the reason I'm under over business?
No, it's old because you weren't here last time.
I know. Hey, I was, I was at a Marty Stewart concert, so.
Oh, wow.
Sorry about that, guys. I have some handouts to give you guys, if that's all right. One of the kids at school asked me if I was retiring because I'm old. No. Well, my name is Robin Ankrum, as you said, and, uh, I don't live in Fall City anymore. I did for a long time. But now I live in the suburbs of Salem. But I do use the Fall City, um, Pritchard Auditorium extensively, at least two times a year. So I'm here to, um, just talk numbers. I'm trying to keep the emotion out of it, the sentimentality out of the renovation, and just look at the numbers. So the very first number that I would like to look at is the forty participants that were on the sample survey. Um, forty is really a very low sample survey number for a town the size of Fall City. So it's probably one to be between forty and fifty, because if it didn't over fifty, they would've said fifty. So I would guess that it's between forty-one and forty-nine people that participated in that survey. For it to have been a valid survey, one way they could've made it as a valid survey is to have sent out the survey forms to, with the electric bills. And those people who are paying their electric bills, who are probably old enough to vote, then they could've been part of that sample survey, and it would've been a more valid survey. But as it stands now, it would not be a valid survey, uh, or sample survey if it was to go before a group of people that, uh, do stuff like that. That's not me, though. So I do have more of these. And I only have a few. Sorry. The next number that I would like to talk about is auditorium. Uh, you'll notice that in your packet that I gave you, obviously auditorium, I meant the amount of usage, is the calendar that the city gave me of the days that the auditorium was used. Okay, I went through every one of these several times, and, um, I counted it several times, and I had other people count it also. I, I came up with two hundred and fourteen days in twenty twenty-three were used that the Pritchard Auditorium was used. That's fifty-eight percent and not twenty-five percent. My idea of usage doesn't mean that it has to be all day. It was used sometime during the day. So if we're only going to count all day usage, then that's really gonna skew the numbers, but my, I just counted it if it was used that day at all. I did not count Matt down, Matt's down dates, because I really don't even know what that means. I would assume it's that green thing, but I don't know. And I didn't count the holidays. So those were taken out of the equation completely. Uh, if you look at the calendar, if you're really that bored, you can see that the usage in the, uh, of the auditorium during the summer months was down, which you would expect that to be, because people could, they could have, uh, be outside, they're gonna be outside more, they don't need to be walking and having volleyball games or whatever. Inside is the auditorium, so the usage was down. And I would assume that that would be true if you would use the wellness center too. That the usage would be down during the summer months. So the auditorium is used for a variety of functions, including the graduation, high school, and middle school. High school graduation has over eight hundred people in attendance, and middle school has over six hundred people in attendance. There is no place in Fall City that can hold that many people. No place. Uh, the auditor, the auditorium at the high school, there's not a prayer. There's maybe three hundred seats. Um, the bleachers, who wants to go to an auditory or to a concert or to a graduation and sit on the bleachers at the, in the gym? That is not comfortable. My concerts that I, that's not my concerts, I do take possession of them though, but, uh, the Fall City Public Schools has concerts at Pritchard Auditorium, and always there's over five hundred people in attendance at each one of these concerts. No place in Fall City could you have that? Because I tried. When I first came here, it was at the schools, and then we went to the auditorium, high school auditorium, then we went to the gym, and now we're at Pritchard. There's nowhere else that would fit all the people that we have. The Whitetail Unlimited, uh, banquet has over five hundred in attendance. If you were to even take into consideration SIDS out north of town, they don't hold five hundred people. So there would not be any place else in Fall City that could accommodate five hundred people. Uh, the wrestling that we had, uh, just a couple of weeks ago, as stated in last week's paper, there were over nine hundred people in attendance. And I would assume that with, I heard all about it at school, but I didn't go to it, with the rings and everything that were set up, I don't know where you would set that up at in Fall City. There's no place big enough that would accommodate that also. Um, Fall City Wrestling Club had a tournament about two weeks ago. They had over seven hundred and forty paid admissions with over one thousand people in attendance. That's a whopping number. There were thirty-one teams from four states. We have to remember that when they come to that, they don't just go to Pritchard Auditorium and sit in there. They're gonna buy something while they're in town. That's going to generate revenue. They're gonna buy something at the gas station or at the doll, at the dollar store. Who doesn't go to the dollar store every town you go to, right? At the dollar store or anywhere. They're going to generate money. So it's, it's bringing money into Fall City. Uh, the FFA Alumni Toy Show that was just yesterday, there were four hundred in attendance, twenty-four vendors from five states. It's the thirty-fifth year for the toy show. It's the third largest toy show in Nebraska, which is pretty impressive. They also told me that they, they calculate that they sold between a hundred and twenty thousand and a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of merchandise yesterday. That's a lot of revenue for a town. I, I assume it's about a one percent, so that would be fifteen hundred dollars. That wouldn't be bad. Uh, of course, it's used for walking and volleyball games and wedding receptions. Especially wedding receptions. It's the ideal location. You can decorate it any way you want. It's big enough. People aren't on top of one another. There's room to move around, to dance, or whatever else it wants, whatever else you want to do. Uh, yeah, a new state-of-the-art, uh, sound system was installed in November tw- um, twenty nineteen. Uh, if you remember, I came, I think it was in twenty seventeen, because it took a long time to get it to go through. I came and asked you to back the grant that I wrote for that to be installed. That sound system was made expressly for Pritchard Auditorium. You can't take it out of Pritchard and put it somewhere else and say, oh, we'll just move it somewhere else and it'll work there. It's not going to work there. It was made for the, for that particular auditorium. They came in, they measured it, they looked it over, they decided what kind of sound system we needed at Pritchard. It's not gonna be able to be used somewhere else. And why would we waste the money to just let it sit if we turn it into a wellness center? If the logic of the auditorium not being used enough, as reported at twenty-five percent, if that were to be used as a reason to wait, to do away with the auditorium, then you would need to find the, then you would find the need to close the city pool. It's not used more than twenty-five percent of the year. Or close the parks. It's not used more than twenty-five percent of the year, or the baseball diamonds. They're not used more than twenty-five percent of the year. So we have to, we have to look at, look at the big picture and not just twenty-five percent. Which by my calculations is incorrect, it's fifty-eight percent. There are already two fitness centers in Fall City owned by Fall City residents. The new wellness center would take away business and possibly cause closures of the two businesses that are employing Fall City residents and repaying Fall City taxes. I would like to request a public forum where we could, the people at Fall City could be invited to come and ask questions about the renovation process, or what is being suggested. The one hundred and sixty-four page document to explain the renovations is difficult to find, for one thing, and it's long and difficult to read. The voters of Fall City who pay for the, uh, for the maintenance and upkeep deserve to hear about the plans for the auditorium. After all, it is theirs. Thank you.
Thank you. I might add something that, uh, I think ninety to a hundred percent of the public that I've talked to agree with you a hundred percent, including me. And this didn't start this way. It started wanting to do something with the old city hall, and it graduated across the street. And, uh, I gotta say, I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you.
Well, I, I think there's a little misinformation there too, because the whole project started out as a feasibility study. So it's not that we have already made that decision that we're just gonna gut the auditorium and that's it. Nobody has a voice. Um, is it possible? Yes. How much does it cost? We don't know. How much can we renovate? We don't know. I mean, there's a lot of questions that we don't understand. Um, I'm a part of the committee, and I also am not a hundred percent on board with renovations. Um, I think there's, there's a valid reason to look at alternative locations, um, just as much as renovating the auditorium for numerous reasons, but really, I think we're still in that whole feasibility, does it make sense? And if we don't have people like you taking the opportunity to talk to us, then we don't know. Um, personally, I've had zero phone calls about the auditorium. I've had one person stop me in the street and ask, hey, what's going on? That was like three or four months ago. So I think we need more people to talk. I think having that public forum is an excellent idea. I just don't think people need to feel like this is cut and dry and that building is gonna be wiped out, because that's not the case. Um, if it is, there's one vote here that would be against it without doing due diligence, looking to our options are, so. Um, from a public standpoint, I just feel like everybody needs to understand that this isn't something that's already been decided on from a council standpoint, so.
I, I gotta echo yours. Um, thank you for putting all that information together. It's very, very well put together. Um, yeah, I mean, we're just in the committee, committee standpoint right now. Honestly, the committee could come back and say, let's replace the ceiling tiles of Pritchard Auditorium, ask Weston Witt what the ceiling tiles did in the middle of his dance, you know, fell down right on the dance floor on the ride. You know, we can come back and say, we're just gonna update it, make it look better. Uh, we could come back and we could propose that, hey, we wanna build a whole new fitness center with a pool, you know, out at the, at the hospital, maybe Ryan Larson would be able to do that. All we're doing is forming committee. We did have a public, uh, public meetings early on with the architect that he had, it was, it was on your phone, you had to say, okay, what are some things you'd like to see? It was all that kind of stuff, and it was open to the public at one point. Um, there was a, there was a couple night meetings, so it's nothing that's been done under the dark. It's honestly coffee shop talk got this thing rolling when all it was the concept. So we're just in a committee stage. I mean, we could have a public forum, but what if the committee comes back anyways and says, we just wanna update Pritchard, and everybody's mad and pissed off at the city council for something that's not even happening? So I mean, I, I, I do appreciate, congratulations on your retirement, by the way. But I, I appreciate your input, but I just think everybody just cool it, because you don't know what's gonna come out, and it's gonna have to come before city council again for approval on that anyways. And, you know, initially, when we were talking a couple weeks ago, we thought we may have a grant to do something. Well, that's fallen through. Well, do we wanna do it without help on that? So I guess, yeah, like I said, I appreciate it, but everybody just kind of pump your brakes. You don't know. It could be, could be the exact opposite of what you're thinking. Could be, okay, let's make Pritchard better and, uh, uh, more walkable spot, something ADA accessible. That is not now. Replace the concrete. That's terrible. I mean, it could be that. You just don't know. So that's what I would recommend everybody just to.
May I make?
Speaking of that committee, I'd like to put you on it.
Sure, I'll be retired.
And I need one more.
I'll be on it, Mark.
There you go.
If I can, I don't live in Fall City. I got, she just makes her.
I don't either.
It's a committee, you don't have to.
Absolutely. I'd love to.
May I make another comment then?
Sure.
Um, so I believe that's why you need to open up, an open forum or a pu- a, a public forum, excuse me. There is a lot of things going on out there that is misconceptions. And I think in order to settle people down, it would be good to say, hey, guys, this is where we are. This is not what's happening. This has just been a feasibility study. I think that's the only way, either have it a public forum or have it in the paper or something. Because it's not being communicated that way. It's being communicated that this is what we're gonna do and and we're looking at ways to fund it. And, and I really think that it would calm the waters if we would have more communication. Um, you know, I didn't know, I don't know how many people knew about the other, uh, meetings that you had before.
It was advertised.
It was advertised. Okay.
Well, and Robin, and the last meeting that we had this discussion, when it was presented, was some of us who aren't on any of these committees, like myself. It was the first time I heard it too. That was a public forum, because it was a city council meeting, it's on the agenda.
Mm-hmm.
A couple weeks ago. So we went through it, nice presentation. We had many options in front of us, but it was just the beginning stages of this is what they've come up with. There were multiple ideas. We all wanted to, uh, be renovated and fixed up a little bit, needs to be modernized, there's a lot of touch-ups. That was the first time I saw it. When I saw the project, I goes, oh my gosh. Uh, Pritchard Auditorium gets used, not as much, because we've, we've done the math on it, and it costs us over three hundred dollars a day just to keep lights on and a staff. So yes, we would like to get more rent out of it to help subsidize what it's costing us. It was never once going to be shut down. In the renovation, there was some really extreme stuff with the pool and some, and some walking track, but that was the top. That was the Cadillac. That was the top. And there were other options that we did discuss. There hasn't been any movement. And, uh, you know, so whatever came out of that meeting, whatever was reported, it was audio tape, videotaped, and it came out in the press. I, I don't think we were moving anymore forward. We just listened to it, and there's committees that are looking at the financing, and of course, we've been told then that, that the, uh, grant that we were looking at for historic preservation didn't work because it wasn't so. There's a lot of funding that went away right there, which is naturally not going to make it feasible to spend ten million dollars at Pritchard Auditorium.
Right.
But you know, they shot high, and then it'll come down. I mean, actually, they'll be satisfied with a good paint job and a renovation, the kitchen and, and a few other things that need to be done.
Right.
And that's probably more realistic.
And I don't think anyone would complain about that, because there are some problems there.
But you know, at the same time, the budget allows so much, and we've got an important, and, and so, yeah, we've gone, there's been a lot of things done over the years, but you don't always notice it, but that's a big building, and so, yeah, I'm in total agreement with the kitchen, the cafeteria, the restrooms. Yeah, there's a lot of little things to be done, but I, this, you know, if it was some sort of a thought that we were trying to run something by, this is the first time I heard about it right now tonight. The only thing I heard about it, the very first time we had the presentation.
I think that's the feeling, though. To be honest, I think that's the feeling.
Well, I'm sorry that it is, but it was discussed in an open forum, and like I said, there were some of us that aren't on that committee, it's the first time we heard it too.
But that's where we can re-communicate more information, because if that is, now we know. I mean, we can, we can put out more information on social media or the news. I mean, we can communicate that, but I feel like mostly it was just that grant was kind of the driving force. We had some money available, great, let's push it through for the study. That fell through, and now we're back to the committee, so.
Yeah, nothing's published on the website or anything, because, because it was just a basic conceptual design component out of the, out of the study, and essentially it wasn't a directive or path to really putting additional information out there, because we don't have the we never really had a steering committee formalized until two meetings ago.
And the what, the forty response survey? I mean, yeah, that's, that's not an adequate, no. Have any guidance off of forty opinions in a town this size, and that's not.
Well, that was just a sample size too.
Yeah.
That was, that's just a stick a tone in the water and see if there's any interest is what that
Mm-hmm.
forty or whatever it is. And those are usually people that just responded to the survey to begin with. I don't think they just picked out forty people. I think they're, I think the survey was out there, and maybe they had forty responses. But it wasn't limited to a certain
Okay.
age bracket or anything like that.
It was limited to, because the, all the data was captured there, so it wasn't pushed out anywhere beyond the public meeting, because you had to do it live right there, to be able to capture the data. Otherwise, it'd been, take a lot more money with the study that they done to push it out and capture it.
That's right.
Um, but essentially, when we did the study, the feasibility study, you had, I think we had two, two or four, I can't remember, public sessions, and then we had some stakeholder sessions where we we kind of isolated stakeholder groups, CMC, Fall City Rec, um, Lions Club. Uh, there were some eight or so. Obviously, schools were both involved with that. Tim was, was there for those. Did also go through, like, into what their needs are, and how something would impact if it was Pritchard or offsite somewhere else. What needs truly are out there for the entities, and also what public needs they put through. And they came up with that concept based upon those pieces, saying, yeah, we wanna have a small indoor pool. We wanna be able to, to access the walking track and not close down the court system at the same time. So that's kind of how they came up with the conceptual design. Was like, here's something you could potentially do, or here's a new facility cost. If you're gonna build something, you need to be forty thousand square feet and whatever cost that's gonna be. So from that, then we tried to formalize a steering committee out of that group.
That also included some site visits too, right? There, there was some
Yes, communities and other, you know, where, where this has already happened.
Just to get an impact, yeah, to get an impact on what communities felt they had to do, so.
Because I know they have one in Auburn, and they have a nice one in Nebraska City too. For wellness. Sabatha, Sabatha has one. Right, so.
Theirs was a hundred percent donated money.
Yeah.
Sabatha was.
It's, it's gonna be a heated discussion. I think by the time this is all said and done with, it's gonna get pretty heated, and the more information out there, I think the better, just to keep everybody in.
We need to keep an open, thorough policy here and make sure that it's, the truth is being told instead of just anyone does, so.
Well, like I said, everything that's been discussed has been on board. Yeah, I mean, it's been in public forum. Now, whether or not people knew about it or not, it's not always the responsibility, but it has been. There was public notices to allow this, of people's self.
Well, I don't know about other people, but I don't read public notices, so. Some, I, I know.
Well, how's they gonna get the information?
That's my own fault. That's my own fault. But on something like this, maybe it needs to be, if they, if you know that you're gonna be discussing something as critical as this or as emotional as this could be, then maybe it needs to be more than just a little two line in the public notice.
I've discussed exactly what you said with Anthony, about utility bills, affordability, criminal survey, and what we really wanna need. I've also, the school board's gonna vote, if they haven't already, on having their public school board to the having their basketball games back at Pritchard. I haven't heard back from them yet. But the biggest thing I we said was the utility bills, that's about ten thousand a month. Now, maybe we can do something like geothermal in there, we, we, but we haven't figured that one out yet, so.
So, I didn't say, you received the calendar to make those calculations. The original calculation removed all the ones that were reserved and not utilized. So that's where the difference and discrepancies.
Okay, and it doesn't say on here that it's, wasn't utilized.
Because the, you know, the new calendar just, they block it out.
Right.
And they block, like, all the Sacred Hearts will have, you know, thirty or so, and lots of them use five.
And there aren't that many, uh, Sacred Heart isn't utilizing it as much as they used to, so there aren't that many Sacred Heart reservations.
As long as they're locked out for those days, because we tried to get the priority
Mm-hmm.
set up for those events, and then those weren't utilized. I had those removed out when I did that calculation.
So that's why the numbers are so different.
Yes.
But in closing, there was never any fear of ever tearing down Pritchard Auditorium and going away with it. We know that the need is there.
Right.
So it's not going anywhere. That building's gonna stay, whether we decide to put a lot of money into it or fix it up and make it usable for twenty-five, fifty-eight percent of the time.
Right, yeah.
But yeah, it's not gonna go anywhere.
I like to hear that.
Well, it's probably, it never was. There was never anything in that discussion that was. There was nothing.
That was the impression.
Well.
That was, yeah, that was the That was shock, shock.
Well, that was, that information wasn't, it's not even here.
I think they're talking more about the removal of the seat.
Oh.
Right, right.
That's what all my concern was, everybody coming in, and that's what I said, they're gonna be
Oh, yeah, one of the designs had a walking track where all the seats were gone, and
Right.
But those were just designs.
It's not usable.
Yeah, it's just a design.
Ultimately, we just wanna find a way to utilize it better, however that works, you know, everybody, let's bring that kids do, let's let's open it up and make it more accessible then.
And when I was part of the, the public forum or the public committee thing with, with the designer, um, I said it, and there was a couple other people said it, we would never compete with Campbell's or Noctals, um, vitamins, you know, and, and when they talked about the fitness, it would've been like some treadmills, some ellipticals, you know, a few machines, just for the simple fact of having that there, because you know, you go back five years and we had this discussion, everybody say we don't wanna compete with Plow. You know what I'm saying? And we just wanted to have something in case, you know, somebody decides, hey, I'm, I'm tired of doing the weightlifting business. You know, I mean, maybe you fast forward and they, Plow's no longer here.
Right.
You know what I'm saying? It would've just, it would've not been free weights, you know, anything like that, so I wanna take that off the table. And I was, I was in one of those things, and it's like, we can't compete with them.
No.
You know, or against them, I should say, so.
Can I appreciate that you presented this and, and like explicitly said that you wanna keep like sentimentality out of it? And I think that it's fair to keep some sentimentality in it, like all of us have been to weddings at Pritchard, all of us have been to funerals at Pritchard, all of us have been to graduations. So that it definitely holds a lot of community sentiment, and rightfully so. Um, but the, um, argument is very well put together, like your presentation is very well put together, and have totally fair points, and definitely be kind of feedback that when it comes time for decisions to be made, um, that's exactly the, the discussions, level-headed, well-researched, um, you know, um, not emotional, you know, to keep that out of it, to make it more of a sustainable piece for the community, so. Um, yeah, I appreciate that you came forward with a lot of this, because I think that you're right, I think a lot of things were, um, very much like coffee shop talk, but people who hear that think you forward, came from, or don't know how legit it is or whatever, so. Um, yeah, and I appreciate you going forward with all of this.
Same. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we'll move on to regular business, discussion and action review of the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three audit, and I guess this has been
Yeah, so Julie could not get it, or, hold on, excuse me, this is the meeting that was scheduled for a plan to be here, but they'll have it, um, available for the next meeting on the eighteenth, March eighteenth.
So we'll just move it to the eighteen?
Yeah, so we'll take a motion to postpone the item until the March eighteenth regular meeting.
So move. Seconded.
Or whatever.
First lady, Seven Yeas. Seven yeas.
Number two, discussion and action, update on the Mid-America Rail Campus and Review of LG nine seven seven grant opportunities, total of fifteen million dollars for a transmission improvement project.
I think that's me. So we'll be stretching Fall City Edge, trying to give you a little update right here from the seat. Um, as you all know, in the spring of twenty-two, we got a fifteen million dollar grant um, that was passed by the state legislature for electrical resilience and redundancy in Fall City. Um, in the spring of twenty-three, we got some language change in that, so that it's specific to Fall City. And over the course of that time, we've been working on, um, implementation of this, how we can apply for these funds, what's the best use of the money for the ratepayers, and what's the best use for kind of the future Implementation of this, how we can apply for these funds, what's the best use of the money for the ratepayers and what's the best use for kind of the future of Fall City. So I think it's prudent to kind of look at why we're here and how we got here, there's a long history of this, there's about a fifteen year history of how we got here. And, um, you know, my role here today is to try to educate everyone for public consumption on, you know, why, why we, why we've been going through this and, and why this thing exists, so. We got about twenty-five slides here, um, it was about fifteen to twenty minutes when we gave it to the Board of Public Works, so we'll see if we can improve on that time. So for me, this has been a three-year process, but I was introduced to this when I was on council in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Was alarmed at the, uh, the lack of electrical that we have in Fall City for, for the town of growth, so. What we're looking at here is just some stats and data, right, we're twenty-five mile radius, there's about thirty-eight thousand people that live within that, if you look at the tenure growth, it's negative three point nine percent. If you look at the bottom right, Richardson County is negative seven percent growth. What we're trying to do here is reverse that trend and, um, you could probably chalk up electrical, uh, uh, inaccess to electrical as being one of the kind of reasons for that. So next slide there, um. Fall City is the economic hub for the region and, uh, you know, some of the other stats, the median income and, you know, anywhere from fifty-one to fifty-three percent free to reduce lunches at the public schools, those are all. Things we're trying to reverse, uh, the federal government recognizes Fall City as disadvantaged due to low income and federal government recognizes that. There's, you know, potential for, for federal funding, for opportunities to create H three jobs, which is, which is what we're going for, that's high demand, high wage and high skill. Some of these, go ahead, some of these slides, um, were made by the Fall City Power Task Force, I'll kind of give you a little history on them and why they were created, so. In twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, Becky had some nice slides here to kind of show, um, you know, there's no power in the area, there's, there's no growth for. Commercial, industrial, residential, this isn't all about just trying to bring some sort of dream investor to create some potential jobs. You know, this is about our community and, um, you know, our inability to even fill the ten, four and three acre spots that we have. That already exists in our current industrial park, so next slide there, um, so how this all started. In two thousand nine, Fall City made an excellent investment in Nebraska City Two's coal-fired plant, we own less than one percent of that. It was a seven million dollar investment, they got us access to some really affordable power rates, um, at that plant down there. There's one electrical line that feeds Fall City and it's about maxed out, so. There's been some curtailment issues the last four to five, six-ish years, where our investment in that plant, even though so great and, and good rates. They have not been able to get us the power that we need to run normal day operations, so. Curtailment issues have caused the Fall City Utilities to have to go into the market, um, and buy power at rates that are actually higher than what we invested to get. Next slide there, so here's, here's the timeline of why we know that this exists and, and why it's important, so. In November of two thousand nine, the State Economic Development Office, Phil Michael was working for him, he's a, he's a Fall City fella. Who, um, came down and tried to evaluate some sites, and so they found about a two-hundred-plus acre site. That would be kind of just, you know, west of what, you know, where the UP and BN railroads cross, it's just west of our power plant there. An ideal spot, both connections to both railroads, when you're talking to investors and, you know, industrial site selectors. This is what they're looking for, this is what they want, so. There was a grant for one million dollars that DED, Department of Economic Development was putting out, they're going to invest in a location due to, due to rail sites. So we identified this spot, we started applying for the grant, um, there were thirty communities that applied, we were one of, we were one of six that made it to the final selection process. And they, go ahead, next slide, they hired a professional outfit, there you go, that's the site, you can see in detail. It's no longer a site that's under option, but in two thousand nine, this was the, the spec site, so next slide. They brought in a professional, this Jeff Forsyth, he's from South Carolina, and he said his quote, I thought the two megawatts available power was a typo when reviewing your application. I'm not going to lie, two megawatts is a big problem, but other than that, everything else, everything else is in good shape. So, um, so we were eliminated from it, uh, the DED director said, you know, our site ranked high, various categories, but the amount of electricity is a concern. So that kind of prompted follow-up meetings with, um, the public power district, DED, you know, what does this mean, how do we move forward, what do we do? Next slide there, there's, um, a letter from the governor, um, you know, the, the DED does not invest in sites with insufficient utility services to potential customers. The city's low level of electrical capacity restricts the ability for community growth and competitive, both for the expansion of existing businesses. Um, and recruitment of future projects, so next slide, so basically here's a little takeaway from that two thousand nine, two thousand ten. Feedback, so they completed their site assessment, Fall City's no good, the OPBD system in Fall City is older and not a strong part of their system. DED planning recommends to not invest in this market, um, because of the limitations, they don't want to give us false hope, all options are expensive, there's no easy fix. OPBD said if NPBD or West Star, which was down in Kansas, once Fall City, they can have it. OPBD had, so what had happened for some of the curtailment issues was there were customers up the line that started getting, uh, access to the power. And so, you know, what was maybe five to six or seven megawatts of potential capacity turned into two megawatts. Just to give you a perspective, Fall City runs on about fourteen megawatts, uh, just to run, just from our, just to run our city. OPBD, um, OPBD said they've got a fiduciary responsibility to their ratepayers and they don't see Fall City as a good investment. So two thousand nine, two thousand ten, Fall City's not a good investment, it is what it is, all right, so we move on. So Fall City created a power task force, you know, we're not just going to take this for an answer, so their, their mission statement was to determine solutions to the city of Fall City's long-term power needs. To recommend contractual arrangements and capital improvements to fill these needs and to lead such action as necessary to implement the recommended solution or solutions. So a power task force was formed, um, we've got access to some of that data in those minutes, we've reviewed it and, uh, so next slide, so the power task force, you know, recommended, uh. Fall City, we got to kind of concentrate on what we can control, right? So there was this ten-year period from two thousand six to two thousand fifteen, where there were a hundred and fifteen million dollars in investments made in the community, community assets, you know, just beautifying the community, so. If we can't get the access to electricity, let's, you know, let's work on the things we can control, so. SNC fiber to the home, new hospital, library, aquatic park, senior living duplexes, motel by local investors, Missouri River Bridge at Rulo, which was huge. Downtown revitalization, Grand Wever Hotel, ball fields, and then a backup generation engine at the power plant, hundred and fifteen million from two thousand six to two thousand fifteen. There was also investments in our industrial park in two thousand seven, eight hundred thousand dollars for an industrial park road. If you look in that bottom right-hand slide, you'll see that's the ten acre, the four acre and the three acre spots. It would be hard to recruit investors to spots that we already have ready, um, for potential job growth, uh, because of the, our current lack of power. So, um, next slide, um, there was also an investment in the spec building in two thousand eight, that's when Vantag arrived, they invested. Four point four million dollars in the spec building that had sat empty for ten years, um. And that was that period of just trying to control what you can control, so in two thousand sixteen, as. You know, you kind of get to this next chapter of the, of the power, kind of, you know, we need to look at what we can do again, um. You know, the, the power task force was in deep conversations with public power provider in the district about, you know, what should be done. And it was ultimately decided to invest about eleven to twelve million dollars in, uh, basically this new engine. That would be a safety backup for the community when curtailment issues happen. So it's, it's not economically feasible to run that engine, um, all the time as a, as a standard source of electricity for the citizens and businesses. It's simply as an insurance policy for all the curtailment issues that, that happen, so. That was a good investment, that, that asset, because of the current environment of the power. The city is working on trying to sell that capacity, so it's a, it's a really nice asset that we have, that we can set, that we can sell capacity. To try to, you know, fix up some of the other utility needs that we have. So this, this question was asked, should Fall City's economic growth be hindered by being left at the end of a line in a public power state? Nebraska is the only state in the Union that's a hundred percent public power, they, they have a responsibility to make sure that we have enough power. And so, you know, when you talk to OPBD, they say that you've grown this amount and, um, in their mind. What we have access and what they're giving us access to is, is, is fair for what we kind of need, but obviously it doesn't get us, um, you know, any sort of. You know, game-changing investments or, or any sort of, you know, economic growth that can really be some sort of, you know, call it like a game changer for the Fall City area. Next slide there, um, so this was the, this was the study, it's a confidential study that we used as data to know. How much to apply for, uh, from the state legislature, so this study kind of outlined, um. What it would take to try to get the infrastructure here, we use that as guidance to go to the state legislature, um. And, you know, there, there was still this chicken or egg paradox where the public power company isn't going to invest in Fall City unless you have the business. And the business isn't going to invest in Fall City until you have the power, so we really needed that fifteen million, um, as kind of the, the starter. To try to, uh, for one side or the other to, to, to make a move, and so. You know, the last, uh, two or three years, we've gone through, um, you know, some of those options, this in. Let's say probably five, six, seven years ago, um, Edge went through kind of some of the same process that they did in two thousand nine, two thousand ten. You know, if, if the public power district or the state doesn't view us as investable, you know, then, then we need to try to do everything we can to try to create that intention and try to make it investable, so. Also the Edge went out and got options on some land, um, along a rail site, uh, we partnered with OPBD on a master plan, um, for this. OPBD does have some service area in this, so they've got a little skin in the game, um, and this, this speculative site that is south of town. Is, i- i- it exist, there, there's no one knocking on the door today, there's no investor saying, yes, we're going to buy land out there, it's one hundred percent totally speculative. It's, it's, it's a, it's an opportunity that exists, but it had to exist for us, uh, to get the state's attention, to set aside the fifteen million. You know, they're not just going to invest in, in, uh, something that doesn't exist, so we had to kind of create this thing that they would invest in, that they would see value. And this site right here is, um, it's, I, I believe this is accurate, it's the state's largest contiguous site, um, with rail access. So the state recognizes this as a, as a great opportunity, uh, for return on investment. The LV nine seventy-seven was approved, that's when we worked with Senator Slama's office, uh, Board of Public Works and Edge hired a lobbyist group, Zokowski Weber to assist in passage of that bill. They were pretty instrumental in getting us in the meetings that we thought we needed to have to try to get this passed and, and this sucker passed unanimously with no nay votes. You know, it seemed like a pretty good win, there's actually a bill going through the legislature right now, where they're trying to allot hundreds of millions of dollars. For mega sites in the state and they want to target somewhere in between Lincoln and Omaha to do it. Fall City's already got it, we've already got one and we're, we're one of about three of these super sites, which is the next level down. North Platt and Grand Island are the other two, so. The state is looking for some sort of spec site that doesn't exist yet between Lincoln and Omaha and looking to possibly invest in the continued development of North Platt, Grand Island and Fall City. That's all just kind of speculative, you know, nothing's passed yet. So, uh, go ahead, so we signed another confidentiality agreement in August of two thousand twenty-three with OPBD. As discussions progress, we, we, um, you know, uh, we, we did not put all of our eggs in one basket, we went out and we looked at. Some, uh, multiple solid options that we presented to the Board of Public Works, um, in a closed session on Friday, because we're bound by the NDA. If this council, uh, decides to go into, um, is it, uh, closed session? You guys would have that choice and we can open up a little bit more about some of the details of the options, but we're bound by this NDA and we cannot give that for public consumption. The electrical objectives, so, you know, to address this fifteen-year issue, uh, one of the main goals was to stabilize ratepayer invoices. We've lost population, but we've in, increased utility consumption, um, so it's, it's kind of a wild trend there. We want to maintain funding resources for Fall City Utility Capital Improvements, there's a really nice, uh, ten-year capital improvement plan. That was put out by Mr. Luring, uh, a couple of years ago, that's kind of a guide for the utility department, um, and we want to attract, you know, industrial investment for high-paying careers. One of the, one of the kind of wild stats for Richardson County is when these site selectors are looking for investable areas, it's all about how much workforce do you have? Richardson County is a net negative commuter county, which means we have more resident workers than available jobs. That is a really good recruiting tool when you're trying to invest any sort of, um, you know, uh, prospect investment to the county. So the workforce exists right here, they, they like living in Fall City, they want to live in Fall City, but perhaps they're driving to Kansas or Missouri or a neighboring county for work. You know, we've always said Sabatha is kind of the gold standard in our area for industrial development, um, I'm not saying we're trying to be them, but we're definitely keeping an eye on them and what they do well. Um, and there's, there's, there's some citizens that live in Fall City that drive there, um, for other opportunities. So other investment targets, you know, ag, manufacturing, shipping, distribution, um. You know, is it possible to create three hundred fifty to five hundred of these high-demand jobs over the next twenty years? I mean, that's only one-third of the employees that live in Fall City that aren't working here, um, you know, that just, it, it's, it's speculative, but that's why this project exists. Next slide there, um, these are some of the projects, because we have a site, um, under option and because the state has allotted fifteen million dollars for us. These are some of the kind of game-changing investment opportunities that the state is sending us. Now, I share this with you just so everybody can kind of get an eye on, you know, some of the potential opportunities of Fall City. But some of the, some of the power requirements, you know, even if the council was to move forward with the Board of Public Works recommendation. We still probably wouldn't be in the game for a four-point-five billion dollar investment from Project Elevate, twelve hundred eighty megawatts isn't anything that really exists in America right now. Very few and far between, um, but there are a couple on there that we could, you know, possibly, you know, bring to Fall City. And, uh, you know, you hope that you attract some of those high, higher-wage jobs, um, so that the current citizens, um, choose to work here. Next slide. So we're just trying to ensure that the fifteen million is invested in Fall City service area, um. You know, offset the cost burden to Fall City utility ratepayers, um, reduces Fall City service area power outages. And we've all experienced a few of those here the last three to five years, prepare for future growth, there's nothing more important than ensuring that the community has the, the power to grow. And then a speculative rail site is, is kind of the next step for that, but we really got, we got to, we got to make sure that Fall City, um. It, it can grow simply for just the residential community and the, the, the regular commerce and the industry that already exists here. And help support our current industry if they want to grow and make sure that they have access to the power that they need if they want to do expansion projects. So there's three options that are identified, uh, OPBD is our public power district, there's been some, uh, discussions with Evergy, who is a, a private entity down in Kansas. And then we looked at some onsite solar generation, uh, I can share with you that solar generation is what was quoted as the backup plan to the backup plan. So we've, we've got some data and stuff on that, um, simply if the other options didn't work out. So, um, we're seeking a directive to execute a memorandum of understanding so that we can, um, proceed with an application to the state. The timeline works out to where, uh, the Board of Public Works approved it on Friday, we're seeking, uh, your approval of that today. We would go back to the Board of Public Works here in the next week and a half for, um, an approval of the actual application. Then we would come back to city council for approval of the application to be submitted, uh, March eighteenth at five PM. And I think that's it.
Thank you.
Well, okay, so that's not it, so you might, so you might think that that's it, but the last slide shows you. How just because of you invest in the power of Fall City, you know, it doesn't stop there, you got to keep investing in the housing, you got to keep building our workforce. For, you know, our current employers and, uh, you know, childcare is also an issue, um, that we're, that we're working with the city and the hospital. The school district to try to solve, uh, and so I guess the point that I'm trying to make here is that, you know, just by solving the, the power, you know, it, it's not completed there. There's still a lot, a lot of work to be done, uh, we've got a commercial development that we're soliciting investors for. Um, and we're, we're hoping that that market environment heats up here in the next few months, so. That was the point of that last slide, is that, you know, just seeking a, a recommendation here, it doesn't stop there, we're going to continue to work on the other thing, so. That is the history of, of how we got here. Yes.
Any questions on that?
Any questions on that? Council members have a different packet that's sitting in front of you, which goes over the components that are within the NDA that would need to be talked about in closed session, if you want to go into that, that stuff would have to be done. It's an enclosed session, should go through any of the planning, constantly, it'd be covered by FERC standards for transmission confidentiality, plus also the, you know, price sensitive information that would be there for the multiple entities involved and not wanting that data to get to one another as far as cost of services. So if you don't have any other questions for Lucas, I would recommend moving into a closed session in support of compliance with FERC standards of conduct and to protect the price sensitive information regarding a transmission project. The, within our NDA, Edge Board of Directors is included in that. So neither, neither with that and Board of Public Works. Our, obviously our city council are all covered, so those entities could remain within a closed session to have that discussion.
I know that we go into closed session.
There you go.
All right, seven yeas. So reiterate it, because they're required by law, we are going into closed session to support compliance with FERC standards of conduct and to protect the price sensitive information regarding the transmission project.